Hi, Rosie. You're unmuted. You can start speaking. All right. It looks like we're having some technical difficulties. Rosie, are you on the line? Okay. That was our final speaker.
Okay, thank you. So I think I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion by from Councilmember McMorn and a second by Councilmember Vera to close the public hearing. Please vote. All members have voted. That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to all the speakers. I appreciate your thoughts. I think we all do. Now we're going to go around and give final comments.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Can we do another round of questions before we go to comments if possible?
Questions and comments.
Okay.
Based on... We all good? Okay, yeah. So Councilmember Fish, please.
Thank you so much CFO Soger and Ms. Shavelson. Thank you City Manager Nakbar. Thank you to our staff for this really thorough presentation and being able to answer all the questions that we had over the course of this process, for making yourselves available. And thank you to everyone who showed up to speak on this budget. It's our most important document that we create as a city. So I'm very grateful to all of you for taking the time to share your thoughts. And I want to start by emphasizing that I take our city's financial health and its long-term stability extremely seriously. It's our responsibility to be good stewards of the public funds, which is why at every stage of this budget process, I've worked collaboratively with my colleagues and city staff to suggest improvements to it. The operating deficit, as was touched on, we're facing, it didn't appear out of thin air, and it wasn't caused by affordable housing or Jubalo. It's been building over the past two years, and it was first forecasted a decade ago. The reality is that we have added new programs and we've failed to critically examine our spending. This isn't about blaming anyone, project or department or person. It's about understanding that in order to resolve our budget issues, we do need a more collaborative approach. So I supported, of course, the sales tax measure to help address the deficit. But when it became clear that wouldn't be enough for the long-term future, Councilmember McMorn and I proposed a modest investment of $250,000 to address our long-term fiscal challenges by giving the community a seat at the table. More than just information, allowing them to participate in the process. And I'm so grateful for all the work our Finance Department has done to increase the information we give our residents. This would be allowing them to actually participate in the process from the beginning. And I'm really grateful to Vice Mayor Puzza for joining us and passing that motion and hopeful for what we can do with that. No recipient of the funding's been chosen yet. That'll be a decision made later by this council, of course, with a full vetting process and input from you, the community. Our budget is our city's most important document, and just as it should be a work in progress, so should the process that creates it. We need to build a system that continually evaluates what programs are working, which are not, and where we need to make tough necessary changes. And we've lacked the public's voice in those tough decisions. You know, I want to push back against this concept that we can't fund 93 homes, but we also can't examine our spending. And we, this tells me that it's really, the opposition, at least on this dais, when we came and said, hey, let's look at our budget. Let's see what we're doing, what we can cut, what we can, how we can make this work. And that was not supported. It's clear that protecting the city's finances might be a factor, but it's also about protecting the status quo. It's about maintaining the proportion of funds we've always given, every department, regardless of changing needs. I don't think that's good governance. I think it's burying our head in the sand. How can we have an operating deficit for two years, declare fiscal emergency, ask our residents for more revenues, and in the same breath, claim that our budget process doesn't need any improvement? I wrote an op-ed titled Culver City's Budget Process Is Broken: Public Input Can Fix It. But after experiencing the process from this perspective, I think "broken" might have been the wrong word. The system isn't broken. It's working exactly as it was designed, which is to keep the public at arm's length. And we saw that with, you know, the sudden firing of the lifeguards and the awarding of a contract to a company with a history of labor violations, almost. We didn't award it. We saw it when we failed to have the necessary conversations to support our school district, which is also facing financial challenges. And we saw it when our budget process included way less public engagement than all the other city plans that we create as a city, despite being arguably our most important. So the public is really missing from this process that shapes our city. And this isn't just a local issue. Across the country, cities have made budget decisions based on outdated assumptions. For decades, for example, we believed that the only way to ensure safety was to add more police officers, often at the expense of housing, healthcare, education, all of which we know create safe, resilient communities. So I agree, we should ask hard questions about the $16 million loan. It's a significant amount of money. But since 2013, our police department's budget has nearly doubled, from $33 million to $60 million. We are now spending $27 million more every year than we were 12 years ago. We're spending $10 million more than we were spending just three years ago. And that's every year, not a one-time payment. I would encourage us to apply the same level of scrutiny that we are currently applying to Jubalo for a $16 million loan to the rest of our $200 million general fund. And when we do, you deserve to have a seat at that table and a real voice in how the dollars are spent. When people point out that our reserves should only be tapped in emergencies, I completely agree. And let's talk about an emergency. In 2022, we created the Housing, Homelessness and Human Services Department, this council did, or the previous council, to build a continuum, or the one before that, actually, to build a continuum of care for those in crisis. We recognize that housing is foundational. It's essential as water, food, and clothing, which is why homelessness is a life-threatening emergency. It attacks every aspect of that foundation. In LA County, 2,500 people die on our streets every year. Their houses might not be on fire because they don't have them, but they die every year. So for more than 100 individuals living on our streets in Culver City, we know this is a public health crisis. In fact, the previous council declared a state of emergency on homelessness in 2023. But instead of addressing the root causes like expanding affordable housing, expediting it, strengthening renters protections, that emergency was used to justify the rushed passage of an anti-camping ordinance, which made it illegal to be unhoused with anything more than a blanket or pillow anywhere in the city. And now when we have a real opportunity to address homelessness in a meaningful way by building our only second affordable housing development in 30 years, all of a sudden, we're no longer in an emergency. Now that we're no longer displacing folks, we have a chance, and we have a real chance to use city funds to stop homelessness for generations of families, that emergency disappears. That's where we are right now. With Project Home Key, The Wellness Village, our motels, and our mobile crisis team, we've finally begun the difficult work of undoing decades of underinvestment. But these services are just responses to the root issue, which is our lack of permanent affordable housing. For too long, we've treated housing as a commodity, not a human right. Whether you're a senior facing retirement, a young person who grew up here, or a teacher struggling to afford to live where they work, your income currently determines whether you get a roof over your head. If you can't afford it here, that's your problem. But really, it's all of our problem. Enrollment in our schools is declining as young people can no longer to raise, afford to raise families in our city. Our city's pushing out our working-class neighbors, losing the diversity that makes it so vibrant. And evictions are at their highest point in years, all because we failed in our duty to build housing. Understate housing goals, excuse me, Culver City is required to build 1,700 low and very low-income units by 2029. But as of now, we only have 466 low and very low-income units in the pipeline, far behind what's needed. And one-fifth of those come from just one project, Jubalo, which stands as the largest contributor of affordable units in our pipeline. The next affordable development hasn't been designed or funded and is still several years away. And yes, 100% affordable housing is expensive. Publicly funded projects are more expensive because they require a puzzle of funding sources, and the pro forma takes years to align those sources. And it uses, of course, as we appreciate, unionized labor with prevailing wages. We want to make sure that folks that work on this are treated well. And every 100% affordable project that gets to this stage is a near miracle, which is why I've been working with this council and with Councilmember McMorn and the Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee on ways to expedite 100% affordable housing projects, because it shouldn't take six years to get here. But if you think 840K per unit, which is what this is, is expensive, we have no indication that any future housing, affordable housing projects on the West Side will be any cheaper to build. In fact, I'd be willing to bet that they won't be. This is a per-unit cost to the city of 210K in hard costs, if you use 20 million in hard costs, which is less expensive than recent projects that Culver City Community Corp. completed in just the past one or two years. Santa Monica recently built the Los Flores Development, 73 units, cost the city 20 million per unit, cost of 280 compared to our 210. Another one, 1819 Pico, was 48 units, cost $271,000 per unit. Both of those are more expensive than what Culver City is being asked to provide. Because I think, as it turns out, 95 homes is a lot of homes. It's a big development. So I think ultimately, the real choice that we have in front of us is just whether to use this 12 million in our general fund reserves to build 93 homes for low-income families to address the real emergency that is our housing and homelessness crisis. And doing so, as city staff and our CFO pointed out, brings our general reserves from 30% to 21%. 21% is higher than the 20% policy of Manhattan Beach, Norwalk, Azusa, Carson, Torrance, Riverside, and Pasadena. They all have a target reserves of 20%. And it's still well beyond our neighbors in the city of Santa Monica, whoever target a 15. And every city's different, right? But it's good to know that, you know, while one may reasonably disagree with the use of these funds, I understand. The characterization that it puts the city in dire financial jeopardy isn't really supported by the policies of our neighboring cities. With these 93 homes, hundreds of families will have the chance to live in our city, serving as a safety net for our entire community for the next 75 years. I heard a commenter say the city needs resilience. Affordable housing for low-income families is resilience. That's how we create a resilient community. There are, of course, risks with the project, just like there are with any project, but we really can't afford the status quo. We spend so much more trying to manage our homelessness situation than we do trying to actually solve it. This is the solving it part. As leaders, we have a responsibility to not just see things as they are, but as they could be. We have so much power in this room to shift our resources to create stronger, more resilient communities. It requires us to take a leap of faith together. And I want to recognize that. But it's a worthy investment in our future. When it comes to CCUSD funding, by the way, I couldn't agree more. Our city could definitely support our schools in a more significant way. It was something I talked a lot about, or at all. It was something I talked a lot about during my campaign. We included the request from the superintendent to fund, or city staff included the request from the superintendent to fund the crossing guards, as well as the improvements for the swim team at the plunge and others. The conversation about further support was pretty absent from our budget process until tonight. And I think that's another reason we need to proactively go out into the community and create more opportunities to have these discussions so we can hear recommendations from the community and work those out together so that they're not coming to us at the 11th hour. But I'm very supportive. If we want to agendize a conversation, I'm all in about supporting our schools tonight and using our next budget process. Of course, we need to use our next budget process to find a way to further support. For those who, you know, remain reasonably concerned about our overall financial health, I'm right there with you. I will continue to work with staff, my colleagues in CCSM to add necessary guardrails on our public funds, which we will discuss in this upcoming item A3. Those include safeguards that the tax credits or vouchers were to be revoked. All of that is going to be discussed in A3, and I'm looking forward to that conversation. I'm also supportive of prioritizing Culver City residents, students, and workers, to the extent the law allows. That's also coming up. And I commit to exploring new revenue sources and, of course, examining our spending to restore our reserves, balance the budget, all with your voices at the center. And so I just want to say I'm deeply grateful to our community for rallying around this project for the past six years, to Community Corp. of Santa Monica, which has been building affordable housing for four decades, to our city staff for their diligence on the project, Jesse Mays, City Manager Nakbar, to Director Barnes, to the Culver Palms United Methodist Church for deciding to be a part of the solution to our city's greatest crisis despite six years of challenges. Thank you for not letting up. After decades of inaction, I don't think we can afford to walk away from our housing crisis. We must act and finally prioritize affordable housing. I don't think this is the time to throw up our hands and claim defeat. I really believe that the safety and well-being of our community are on the line here, and we have the tools we need to do this and create a Culver City where folks of all income levels can live and thrive here. And thank you so much for the time, Mayor, and I'll turn it back over.
Thank you. Councilmember Rick Moran.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to clarify one thing, if I could.
Sure.
With regard to the school, CCUSD, and their request for funding, I want to remind the council, this was, the council was first made aware of this, the city was first made aware of this at a joint liaison committee meeting with CCUSD and the city. And in mid-April, we provided an email to the city council on this topic that included report from an outside consultant that we had retained. I just wanted to remind everyone of this, of that.
Thank you.
And can I add one thing that, in addition to the crossing guards, I did have a slide in the May presentation of the budget. So in addition to the $550,000 for the crossing guards and the $45,000 for the timing apparatus for the plunge, the city has also historically paid the, all of the refuse bills for the school district and the sewer service charges that total approximately $400,000. So we just have a shy of a million dollars in the proposed budget that is funding for the school district.
Thank you for that added context. I just wanted to clarify that. Definitely remember the report you sent. Appreciate the information. This was more a comment about how it wasn't a part of our conversation. We didn't hear, you know, much from the public on this topic until this, this last meeting. So thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Councilmember Rick Moran.
Thank you. Thank you so much to our staff and community members who commented this evening. I really appreciate this process. I've always said, since I've been on this council, that budgets are value statements. We always have a choice. These issues are not zero-sum. And if we change how we do things, we, and we should, we could have different results. I do just want to uplift in this space in particular that we are careful about the language we use. I've heard folks say things like "these people" and folks engage in personal attacks, and that really detracts us from what's before us. I've often said we're in these chambers until almost midnight because we all share a love for the city. We are all neighbors and community members, and I really hope that, that we keep that, we keep that near and dear because we're here, because we care, and I hope that we can continue to build upon that respect and that love for the city of Culver City. And building on that, I've heard a lot of fear, and I want to just say I understand that and I empathize with that, but it is not how I lead. It's not how I parent. I believe that when we take care of each other, when we see one another, when we see the humanity in one another, we can actually see, you know, the change that we want to see. We can be the change that we want to see. It's cliche. But it's cliche for a reason, right? There are reasons why these things are things that folks say. And my why, and, you know, the reason why, you know, I ran for reelection or ran in the first place is rooted in ensuring that everyone who lives, works, learns, and plays in our community to be welcomed, treated with respect, and have access to high-quality city services. I ran to support more transparency, accountability, more housing, more sustainability, better transit, more equitable and responsive local government that supports all of us. I always say more than the status quo is possible, and it is safe to dream of a Culver City that is not rooted in fear or exclusion. It is safe to welcome new neighbors here. And we can truly do hard things. We can solve hard problems, and we need innovation. We need new ideas, and we need community at the table. So I'm going to support this budget. I'm going to support Jubalo. I really would like to spend some time evaluating further and having a deeper conversation in this space because I do remember a request in the joint meeting, but I didn't hear any more about the specifics of what our district was requesting. So we'd love to have that conversation come back to us. I would love to have us consider supporting the senior management role for the PRCS team because that is something that I continue to hear from both commissioners and community that is needed. I think we should really evaluate what we're paying our PRCS workers. I think that contributes to the turnover and some of the issues that we're seeing. And since I've been saying, probably since I've been on the council, we need to really think about how we deal with our budget. I think the community input is a good step in that direction. There are no silver bullets here. There's no magic wands, but we have to really think about and evaluate how we're funding. And again, the sales taxes is one approach, and if, you know, if the sales tax doesn't pass, it is likely the county or metro will get that quarter cent. And if, you know, community members don't want us to have that, and they want it to go to the county or metro, that is fine. But separate and apart from that sales tax, we really have to think about how we're going to evaluate our budget, how we're going to invest. Those are conversations we need to have, and community needs to be at the center of that. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into my comments, I've got a few more questions to ask. Some of the comments were from speakers about how we're instilling fear in the community in terms of reduction of services. If our sales tax doesn't pass and we continue down the path we're going, would there in fact be reductions in services?
There would have to be. We would have to make cuts to expenditures, and so we would have to to look at how we would cut services, and most likely that would be cutting personnel.
Okay. And then a question for the city manager. I think you got here in 2010. I think so, right? And then, in terms of when you got here, how our budget looked, how our funding looked compared to it is now, how, how much have you increased that in your tenure here?
During my tenure, the reserve, city's reserves were tripled, from 50 million to 150 million, up until we started in deficit mode over the last couple of years.
Okay. Great, great job, John. I really appreciate your dedication to the city and our financial well-being. And then in terms of budget, whose responsibility is it to present a budget or to the city? And how has that come to be?
Councilmember, the charter specifies that it's the duty and obligation of the city manager to prepare a budget for the council's consideration.
So even if we spend $250,000 on getting more participation, it still would have to go through the city manager to bring it to city council, correct?
The city, it's the city manager's duty and obligation.
Okay.
Under the charter.
Under the charter, okay. Thank you. And then there was also some comments about we have to be good to our promise to CCSM, I'm sorry, about committing to a certain amount of vouchers. Was there a contract or a promise or something, a commitment that was made with them for this amount?
Councilmember, I don't think there was a commitment. I think there was a letter that indicated that they were in essence eligible, but subject to an entire process that had to unfold. I do not believe there was any commitment.
So no formal commitment?
No, sir.
Okay. And then in terms of preference, I know that it's been going back and forth, and initially, when this first came forward, they had asked to really remove Culver City's preference in terms of housing. Pardon me, and how does, and I know it's confusing, how does the preference sort of work in terms of we're allocating federal funding to that? And I think in doing so, you'd have to open it up to a greater, larger process. You couldn't, you can prioritize residents, but, or Culver City residents, but you can't make a commitment or...
I think Housing and Human Services Director Tevis Barnes is... Yeah, she's making her way. But to put it simply, there is a preference that can be included, but there can't be, you cannot exclude non-residents. There has to be a, there's a process where a preference could be included, but it's it's not a process that could exclude non-residents, and it, and I think Tevis can explain. We have something in place with our current process for tenant-based vouchers.
Good evening. For the sake of the public, I am Tevis Barnes, Housing and Human Services Director. I believe the question is, how do preferences work in the application and selection process for affordable housing units? A preference is not a guarantee. It is absolutely not a guarantee. We are allowed to have a preference because under our current Section 8 tenant-based program, we do give a preference for Culver City residents, people who live and work in Culver City. When we work with a developer that has affordable housing, we first require them to do what we call an affirmative advertising campaign, meaning that they must make it known to everyone possible that these units will be coming available and going online, and make the application process as accessible as possible. Advertise in ethnic-focused newspapers. We go as far sometimes to place in markets or places we know where certain groups may congregate so that we can make sure that they are well notified in advance that these units are going to come online and what the application process is. So that's one of the first steps. Then the application process happens, and usually it's an online process now. And we normally structure it first come, first served. And that's the second step, the application, first come, first served. And then from there, you usually say you pull the first 100 folks who apply. And from there, you sift down further and you take, of those 100 who applied first, how many are actually residents, as they stated? And then from there, you drill down even further, and you say, okay, well, how many of those are actually income-qualified for the units that we have available? of those are actually income-qualified for the units that we have available? And you take that first batch. And so every comment or statement of folks made, then you have to drill down further and say, okay, now you got to prove it. You need to show us your residency, and we give you criteria such as a lease or a bill or a statement, and then you have to show us your income information. So by the time you drill down and go through all of that, you may not have as many folks as you think you have to drill down or sift through folks on that level. So that's kind of how a preference works. So there really is no guarantee by the time you actually go through the process.
All right. And we couldn't, you said first come, first served, so to speak. Culver City residents per se couldn't be given priority, like having an application open to Culver City first and then...
Right. No, you could not. That would be looked upon, I think, by as a fair housing violation, that you're purposely trying to exclude out everyone from having access to the application process. Everyone must have access to the application process.
And then would Culver City have a seat at the table in terms of determining who gets to be placed in this facility or no?
The way it works, because we're not the ones controlling the waiting list, but we are working with the developer. The developer will develop the waiting list, and city staff will then go through an audit, one to see that they actually had an affirmative outreach campaign. Like, we need to see public notifications that they notified in certain publications. We need to know how long they had the waiting list open, were there any glitches? And then they develop their waiting list, and so we start asking them, okay, well, you pulled these first folks, let us see that they were the first come, first served. And most computer programs will let you know exactly what time and what, how many seconds that a particular application was placed and whether or not there were any duplicates because folks with duplicates are automatically thrown out. And then once they start to pull, we then evaluate the folks that they are pulling and ask for third-party proof that they are actually resident and third-party proof that they're actually income-qualified.
Right. But so we don't really have the actual sheet at the table in terms of even getting to that process. We get it sort of after the fact.
We get it after the fact, but they can't lease folks up until we say it's okay.
Right. Okay. And then there's some also comments about this project will create sort of a pipeline of housing or a pipeline of, yeah, housing for some of our most vulnerable people out of Wellness Village. How many units are specifically set aside for low-income housing, low-income levels of our housing?
If I recall the unit breakdowns, so all the units are 80% and below at this project. But folks who would be coming out of our interim housing resources at Project Home Key or Wellness Village or motel, I'm going to be frank with you, most of those folks are receiving GR, which is like, believe it or not, it's been this way, I've been doing this 30 years, and it hasn't gone up, so I don't know who comes up with this number, $264 a month, which is what, $3,000 a year? So many of them are actually what HCD or the State of California Housing and Community Development Department would refer to as acutely extremely low-income. So I believe 10 units in their unit mix or for folks 30 and below, I believe I have that correctly. That's 10 units. And so right now, we have 16 folks at Wellness Village, 39 folks in the motels, and about 32 on the interim side of Project Home Key. So all of those folks would be vying for those 10 units where they income-qualify.
Wow. Okay. Tevis, thank you so much for your input and your information. It seems like, yeah, I'm shocked here, just only 10 units for those folks that are most vulnerable and need it the most. I think that's all the questions I have for you at this moment. Thank you so much. I got a question for Ms. Soger, and I don't know if it's, I should ask you or the chief. There was a comment made about the PD's budget doubling. How has that grown in proportion over, I guess, the last few years in terms of where it was and where it is now? I know, I think in 2015, it was 35% of the overall budget, and now it's 30%.
It's 30% now. I mean, it's grown really proportionally with the budget, and most of that increase is related to thing, it's not an expansion of programs, it's costs like our PERS cost, our unfunded accrued liability that has continued to grow, and because that's related to personnel and PD is primarily personnel, it gets hit, you know, FIRE does as well, but they both, that continues to grow. And I want to say, I don't have the numbers on me, but it was almost like a $12 million increase, you know, over that time. So additionally, just the cost, as with everything, with all of our salaries across all of our staff, you know, there have been COLAs and increases and costs of benefits. All those things go up, and we don't have, we really don't have control over that. But the personnel, the number of personnel, sworn personnel is the same, and their non-sworn is, I think, in 10 years, it's a few less, maybe four less.
So it's not like we as a city have been throwing money at the police departments that hear and just have it and run with it. It's basically costs that we have no control over in terms of the raising of it, correct? And Chief, if there is a reduction in cost, a reduction rather in income or salary, the overall budget amount, would that ultimately relate to cuts in services? I know it's difficult to sort of guess or estimate, but I know LA is dealing with the same sort of problem where they cut so many employees. Now they're talking about really a lot of staffing, overtime, the cost going even doubling with overtime, having police officers take care of the personnel. But your thoughts on that?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Vera. You know, as CFO Soger mentioned, we are primarily staff, and that is the primary driver of, you know, our budget at the police department. We're 90% personnel, 10% is the remainder of our costs, operating and maintenance costs. And so any significant reduction in our budget is going to result in a reduction in personnel, which will in turn result in a reduction in services, response time, case clearance, you know, traffic safety, all of the things that we are responsible for. And that's the best way I can sum it up without, you know, obviously diving into exactly what it, where we would make the cuts. It would just, in general, be a reduction in services.
All right. Thank you so much, Chief. And I think that's all my questions right now. Lisa, I really appreciate you and your entire team really presenting such a detailed report to us. I think we all agree that we do need housing. We need housing at all different levels. But if it doesn't make sense in terms of financially, it just doesn't make sense. And I think one of the speakers said it, and I hate to agree or I even hate to think it, but I think ultimately what this council is about or some of our members is, it's about defunding ultimately. I mean, the PD has a target on their back for some reason. It's about taking funds away from the largest contributor to the drawdown on the general funds, and it's just, in my opinion, another name for defunding. Do I want to cut personnel? Absolutely not. Do I want to cut services? Absolutely not. Is a healthy reserve important to the vibrancy and the stability of the city? I, absolutely. I think, you know, when we hit some of these emergencies that came up, the Great Depression, the COVID, it was good that we had some substantial reserves. If we want to have a conversation about reducing our reserves, then we should open it up to the community. We shouldn't make this decision up here on our own without having a larger conversation with the community. I think we have staff professionals in place for a reason, and it's to listen to their expertise in their field and use our own minds and hearts, but follow their judgment. And when staff tells us that this being a great deal and all doesn't make financial sense to the city and the stability, the financial stability of the city, then I think it's incumbent of us to listen to that. I, well, I don't know how much more we can say about the guidance and advice that we've gotten from staff on a one-on-one and plus to the public. How we can even think about moving forward with this is just irresponsible financially. There was a comment made about, where did I put it? About how things were, how things are versus how things could be. I think it's, yeah, we can, we can all say, yeah, we would like things to be this way, but we have to play in defect or listen to how things are and realize how things actually are financially. I'm not going to, I have a whole few pages of everything here. I have asked more questions than I should have, but I wanted clarity on this across board for the community. I can't support this moving forward. I would ask my colleagues if we remove this item from the budget altogether and commit to a $3 million one-time fee to our school district. If we really want to invest in the future of this community, the future of this community is our children and our school district. So if we want to make a commitment to that, I would propose the removing this item from the budget, and I came up with $5 million. If $5 million is too much for this council, then we can windle it down to $3 million. But I think that shows us where we stand as a community, as a council, in terms of supporting the real future of our community, and that's our children. So I can actually, if you entertain it, I motion to remove that from the budget and add, pardon me, $3 million to our school district as a one-time gift. I don't know if there's a second on that or not. All right. Well, no second on that. I tried. And other than that, Mayor, no other, no other comments at this moment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Puza.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to all the people who spoke tonight, who submitted emails, who called and texted. As I've said many times before, I think about this project all the time, every day. It weighs on me. I hear the fear, I hear the anxiety, I hear the excitement and the passion for this project and to build affordable housing. I know that everyone on this dais has tried to help make this project succeed. Late last year and early this year, Mayor O'Brien, city staff, and staff from CCSM and myself all met weekly to try to find viable solutions and pathways. Thank you to staff. I do respect the guidance and recommendations of our staff and definitely take that into account, but ultimately, we're the elected officials and we're the decision-makers. I have met with many community, excuse me, community members from across the spectrum of support for this project to mostly listen and to share where I was at and what I was thinking in that particular moment. And I hope I got back to everyone, but if I didn't, my sincere apologies because it's been very busy. And these conversations were extremely helpful and informative and always encouraged me to see things from different perspective. And I've been able to process that dialogue, so I'm really grateful for all of these conversations. This is a project that has been years in the making. So thank you to CCSM and Culver City United Methodist Church for bringing this idea to life. As I said in the past, I hope that more faith-based institutions consider utilizing SB4, the Affordable Housing on Faith Lands Act, which allows the fast-tracking of affordable housing process, projects on land owned by religious institutions. It's a 100% affordable housing project that has been approved to be built. Councilmember Fish already discussed arena numbers for affordable housing in our city, so needless to say that there's no doubt that our city's in desperate need of this type of housing, and we don't want to lose opportunity like this one because it's so difficult to build affordable housing, especially on the West Side, which is why there's so much attention on Jubalo Village. It is true, we don't know yet the repercussions if we don't build all the units according to Rena, but we should do everything possible to do so in good faith. There are other affordable housing projects in the pipeline, but we don't know if they'll make it through the process. There are still a lot of unknowns about the projects, and they're years away, and they are not entirely free. For example, one project would be leased on city property for something like $1 a year for 99 years. Culver City will still be fixing roads and streets, uneven pavements, repairing bridges, upgrading field lighting, and renovating buildings and so much more. There's $125 million in carryover from last fiscal year and $38 million in this fiscal year in the capital improvement budget. And I want to start moving more in the direction of funding more infrastructure projects and capital improvement projects. And as the CFO mentioned, the budget does include $1 million for the school district, and I, too, am open to having that conversation about their needs, and so I'm happy to have that conversation. As already mentioned regarding the sales tax measure, Culver City was already at the sales tax limit. However, with the passage of Measure A, it opened up additional quarter cent sales tax allowance. So if the city does not go after this revenue, it's possible and most likely that another agency like Metro or the county will do so, and Culver City will not get that revenue. So it's expected to generate possibly $5 to $6 million a year, and this revenue will be on an annual basis, so it won't just be a one-time revenue. And this would significantly address our structural deficit, which is due to our pension payouts. And this is expected to peak around 2031 and significantly drop off in 2045, of course, give or take a few years. As we move forward, this council and future councils will have to set priorities, will have to make decisions like whether to let all of our projects in the pipeline catch up with our budget and how do we prioritize our spending in the future. I've been an advocate for more transparency in the budget process, and I appreciate the work that the CFO and staff has done in this area. I think you can do this in a thoughtful and strategic way, which is why I didn't want to cut services this year. I'm looking forward to the survey that will garner more data on our community needs for next budget cycle, and I'm looking forward to learning more about Councilmember Fish's proposal about more community participation, which is why I agreed to earmark the funding for our conversation. I'm also interested in learning more about the equity analysis of our programs, which was suggested by Councilmember McMoran. This is how we will progress towards making more data-informed decisions with the community. And this is really about values on a deeper level and the roles city play with housing and homelessness. When I was campaigning, the number one issue was housing homelessness. Many of the housing-for-services that the city offers today for the unhoused were unimaginable to many residents who support them today. It was a battle to change people's mind. Now, some people still think that we shouldn't be spending money on homeless services at all. Well, others think we could have negotiated better contracts, but eventually, most people got used to the idea. As far as the cost of Jubalo and future revenue, we have the $8 million set aside. About 7.55 million is housing-related and the affordable housing funds, and about $445,000 is from the general fund. And then we have the $12 million... And then we have the $12 million set aside in the reserve fund. We received $5.1 million from the Measure RE last month. We have the former gun store property, which at the minimum will net us about $3 to $4 million. We still have updates to the fee schedule for parks, recs, and community services, impact fees from all the new developments that will come in, mostly in Fox Hills. In 2027, we'll most likely sunset the Wellness Village, which is about $4 million a year in contract services. Plus, I am open to considering the digital signage kiosks, which will bring in approximately $2 to $5 million a year. On the subject of revenue, I'm very open to looking at additional ways to bring in revenue that makes sense and still align with the values in our city. I want to create a plan to build back our reserves, and I'm also looking at, open to looking at our budget and our programs critically and making sure they're efficient as possible. We've heard the comments and threats designed to bully, intimidate, and shame the decision-making process, and I've heard whispers about a campaign that will be launched against me to attack my character if I support Jubalo. This is all part of being an elected official, but at the end of the day, I have to make the decision based on what is right and just and what is best for the city. So this vote is important to our commitment to meeting our housing needs, keeping our city safe, and reflects the continuation of the work I've been committed to throughout my time on council. I'm proud to have led the way on creating Culver City's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is a permanent resource dedicated to preserving and creating and preserving affordable homes. I will continue to advocate for tenant protections, that is balance, support temporary and permanent supportive housing, and work to ensure a compassionate housing-first approach to homelessness. Saying all that, after thorough and careful review, I want to consider how we best support affordable housing projects like Jubalo during these challenging times, so long as they meet conditions that must be met before we can move forward. And those conditions have to happen, which are live and work preference, and that unless there are funding restrictions, there will be a preference for residents who live or work in Culver City. This will also address our sustainability needs. A lot of people who have low-income jobs have to drive the furthest. That the project-based vouchers must be guaranteed. Given the volatility of HUD, this is essential to ensuring the long-term financial sustainability of the project and the ability to house those most in need. And last, financial contingencies, that the financial model includes sufficient contingencies to cover cost fluctuations, such as tariff increases and inflation. I also heard tonight that CCSM would not ask for additional funding from the city. I do believe housing is a human right, so if these conditions aren't met, this project is a strong step towards that goal. I'm also supportive of the senior management analyst position. This position might have some revenue generation, which is not always the point, but it won't hurt. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your comments and feedback again. Thanks again to our staff for all the work on this. I know for the past week, I've been grilling everyone for more information. Okay, I'm gonna go, I took a lot of notes. I don't pre-write my speeches. I kind of write it down and kind of hear what everyone says. So just, you know, the updated housing pipeline report, we get it, I think, bi-monthly, is at 643 affordable housing units that are in the pipeline. To give you a sense, in March, that number was 612. In February, it was 538. So the number of units, affordable units in the pipeline is growing, okay? And all of those, except for the 95 or 93 from Jubalo, do not require any city funds. So we've got all those in the pipeline, in the development phase, and they're coming. And the number's growing, month over month. Thrown out there is this, you know, the RENA number of affordable housing unit requirement of 1,700. I asked this of our planning director some time ago. These numbers are unattainable. There's no, I asked him, is any city gonna meet these? And he says, well, some are gonna meet them. There's small towns out in the country that have an affordable housing requirement of like five units. So sure, they can pick that up, but any large urban, even small urban city is not gonna be able to pick that up. So what's, you know, HCD gonna do? They're gonna penalize every single city in the state? So we're doing our best, and we did it through our zoning, our upzoning throughout the city. And there is a lot, especially relative to other cities, we are, we're beating everyone. For our size, no one's doing what we're doing for our unhoused, no one's doing what we're doing for affordable housing development, all of it, okay? It's really funny that Councilmember Fish brought, he came up with the same and wrote it. I wrote it down, $210,526 of city funds per unit of Jubalo. Well, what I did then was I multiplied that number by the remaining 548 affordable housing units in the city that are in the pipeline, and if we gave the same funding to all those, it would be a total of $115,368,248. So if we were equitable in the distribution of assistance to those that are developing affordable housing units, that would suck up most, like 90% of our general fund budget. I have voted yes on this project every single time until we couldn't, until this $16 million additional funding request came up, and it was clear that we weren't gonna find an alternative way to fund it other than our city funds. One of our speakers, Carol Ann Garrett, she was incredibly passionate, and she was one of the last ones to speak, and she walked out with her walker. But she said, it's, yeah, we need it, we want it, but we can't always get the things that we want. We just, it's, I'm just flabbergasted that one singular project of 95 units is getting $20 million in total from city funding. I don't, it's probably like 15% of our entire general fund at this point. To me, it's just, I'm just shocked. I mean, what could we, what could we do with the $20 million if it wasn't for this? You know, I think I saw a community center in Fox Hills is like $9 million. You know, the high school needs a swimming pool, you know, that's around the same amount, which is insane to me, $10 million for a pool. You know, they're asking for money, you know, $3 million, $5 million, whatever it is. You know, there's Better Overland, you know, Improving Bayonne Creek. I mean, you know, it's, I, what if we put it all, instead of in the Jubalo, what if we put it all into rental assistance? Then no one would, in Culver City, would fall into homelessness for, probably forever, I don't know. That's, I mean, that would go on forever. It's just, yes, objectively, if we weren't, if it wasn't for this enormous cost, this enormous pressure on the city, when we just declared a fiscal emergency, absolutely this project, absolutely. I've been in favor of it. I voted that way. But it's, it's not, we're here to have a fiscally sound city, and I, putting all this money into one place, I can't support it. Regarding our broken budget process, or however we want to call it, or I'm not calling it that, one of my colleagues is, we provide so many opportunities, and they're not listening sessions. There's opportunities for people to speak on it every time. We have a budget, what's it called, where people can, you know, go online and they can give the input?
Oh, we have a budget input box?
Yeah. How many input items have we received from that?
Two.
That's why we're elected. I, I mean, all weekend, you know, all weekend, all weekend. It's, we're crazy, we're crazy. That's why we're here, and we love our city. We love our city. It's enormous. And this is with, in my opinion, the easiest-to-follow budget presentation in this region, for sure. And then, you know, let's just say the quiet things loudly. This is for a large percentage of this, these advocates here about ultimately defunding or reallocating, whatever you want to call it. And my colleague said, you know, let's look at the, you know, the reserve, the emergency reserves of local cities to compare. Okay, well, let's look at the spending on police from our local jurisdictions to compare. Inglewood, 48.99%. Beverly Hills, 40.87%. Santa Monica, I had 31% from their website, but then I talked to the mayor this morning, and she said, no, it was up, 38%. Hawthorne, 45%. Erdina, 43.1%. Torrance, somehow, 19.2%. So we're above them. Lawndale, 40.1%. El Segundo, 25.5%. They're a little below. Manhattan Beach, 21.7%. Hermosa Beach, 34%. WeHo, it's, I think it's 24%. They just lump it all into one. But, you know, we're not way out there. We're on the lower third of, you know, percentage of spending of our general fund budget. We're compared to other jurisdictions. And like all of our positions in this city, it's competitive. You know, this is, LA is not, I mean, there's nowhere else like it. We got 88 cities in this county that are within 30 miles of each other. So we're competing with other cities for all of our employees, including our police, and we have to stay competitive. It's just the way it is. And, you know, playing with numbers, the police budget doubled in 10 years. Relative to the general fund budget, it decreased from 35% to 30%. It's playing with numbers. It's all, you know, drives, it drives me crazy. It's not honest. And I'm, God, I'm really concerned with the optics of this. I've had people tell me, and I've begged them, I mean, Mike, yes, you're right, spending $20 million on this one project in this climate that we're in is not the thing we should be doing, but I need you to vote yes on the quarter cent sales tax. And it's like, no. Not everyone, a lot of people do say, I get it, I get it, you know, if we don't take it, someone else is gonna take it, but I'm worried. The optics are not, not good. And then, I love that, you know, so many people in this community who are either new or weren't around when I was advocating for schools and parks through my lifetime here, only person here who had two kids, even one kid graduate from Culver City High School, go all the way through our schools. This person started the first sustained fundraising campaign for CCF. I got the highest honor of volunteerism from the Council of PTAs. I created a nonprofit for our parks, which helped fund a playground and put new landscaping around the pools. Yeah. And I expect my colleagues, this is gonna be crazy, I know I'm crazy, after, hopefully, we pass the sales tax, you don't pay for capital improvements with operating budget. We're gonna need a bond, and I'm gonna ask for a bond to improve our parks. So our advocates here, our big advocates of parks, I can't wait for y'all to say yes. So anyway, I wish I could say yes to Jubalo. I really do. And I have been saying yes. I have been the entire time, but it's just too much. It's too much. It's not responsible. So I, there's three votes to move this forward. So as far as the procedure goes here, let me get back to the...
Yeah.
Procedure.
Or, I mean, we can, wanna take it in the order. There. So the first piece is to adopt the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year '25, '26. This just sets, this is also called the GAN limit, and it is the first attachment, I And it sets the appropriations limit at $153,944,972, and that is just the requirement from the state of California that we adopt that every year.
Does that include, by passing that, does that include?
That is not the budget, that is not approving the budget. The GAN limit just is the calculation that we're required to do every year because of state law that has set what our appropriations limit is, and it changes every year by the change in per capita personal income and the change in population, and that is a cap over which we cannot spend more tax dollars than that. And so it has nothing to do with the budget itself.
I have a motion from Councilmember McMoran and a second by Mayor O'Brien to adopt the city council resolution approving and adopting the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2025 to 2026.
Yeah, can you lead the way?
Yeah. So the next order is, is that we will take the respective resolutions for fiscal year '25, '26, and we can do them individually because we have to adopt budgets for the city and then the successor agency for redevelopment, the housing authority, and the parking authority. You can do them all as one, but you could also do them individually.
I'd like to break them up. Or actually separate, do the three in one, and then separate the, separate the general fund, you know, the everything.
Okay. I will remind you that if you're, the housing authority budget also includes funding for Jubalo Village because part of that money is coming from the housing authority.
All right, let's just do it separately.
So you can, we can just go in order and you can take the main city budget first.
And the main city budget also includes, because it comes out of the general fund?
Yes, because it's coming from the general fund. The main city budget includes Jubalo Village, it includes the $250,000. It includes the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the public process. At this point, I've heard council members talk about adding other things, but there has been no formal recommendation to add anything else to the budget.
So, I know we agendized a conversation about sharing grant writing resources. And I don't know if the city clerk can confirm, in the last budget meeting, I believe we agendized a conversation about bringing back the two clerk, excuse me, the two budget, ooh, it's getting to be that time, bringing back the two grant writers. So, the public works grant writer and the PD grant writer in seeing how we can share those resources. I know budgets are tight, so of course, I'm supportive of the parks grant writer and agree with Council Vice Mayor Puzza about that. If we can, if that cannot be done, if that is not something that we can do is share those resources appropriately, then I would be in favor of including the, the parks.
Councilmember Fish, can I, can I comment on that, please? We don't have a dedicated grant writer at the police department.
Okay, so who handles your grants?
That's a shared responsibility amongst our management team.
Okay. So, do multiple people file or write grants for the department?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's just a matter of having more personnel than other departments, I guess, because other departments are struggling to, to...
I'm wondering if that was getting conflated with the public works department? Would, public works has, has a consultant that is available for all of the city to use? They, they did a process where they did an RFP and selected a grant writing consultant, and that consultant is available for other staff, other departments to use.
Okay, well, considering we're having other departments who are struggling with, with this very important thing for any department to grow, I, I would concur with Vice Mayor Puzza that that position seems to be one that could eventually, you know, pay for, or at least be, you know, fiscally positive impact because we're getting resources that we otherwise wouldn't have. So, I'd be supportive of it.
Council? I would just caution that if we don't get a sales tax measure, we will more than likely be coming back to you recommending personnel cuts, which was one of the reasons we limited new personnel in the, in the budget that we've proposed.
Is it possible to reserve this grant writer but not actually hire the grant writer until we see the results of the sales tax measure? And if, of course, it doesn't pass, we don't hire them and don't use the funds?
Yes, certainly, that is, that is possible.
So, does that need a motion on the floor?
There would have to be a motion to add that to the budget. Add the, so, and I, and I'm, just for clarification, you are recommending adding the...
Senior management analyst.
Well...
Right?
It was, there was a, a request from the PRCS department for two additional personnel. Let me find it. Yes. I think a senior management analyst to focus on grants. Mm-hmm. In the amount of a hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand, three-hundred dollars.
Yes, so my, the motion on the floor is to reserve that in our, in our budget with the contingency that if the sales tax measure doesn't pass, that we would essentially not use it. So, it would not be, I guess the contingency is not to actually initiate the hiring until the results of the sales tax measure.
Understood.
And I would assume that a hiring for that type of role would, I mean, it's already June and the sales taxes in August, so I would assume just the prep work would take longer than that, just based on the information we received earlier this evening.
Yes, it would have to be programmed into the recruitment schedule and...
Right.
So, yeah, it's not that, it's not like we would be able to hire somebody on July first.
Right. Gotcha. Thanks.
So, are we doing a motion on the city budget or just on?
City budget.
And including that?
And I just want to clarify, the conditions that are listed, is that something that would be done in A3?
The conditions, yes.
Thank you.
So, now, this is a motion to adopt the respective resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget for the city of Culver City inclusive of Jubalo and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the public process and an additional contingent, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand, three-hundred dollars for a PRCS senior manager.
Yeah? Senior management analyst.
Management analyst.
Contingent on the sales tax.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember McMoran. I have a second by Council, Vice Mayor Puzza. Please vote. All members have voted. The motion passes, three ayes, two noes. Noes from Mayor O'Brien and Councilmember Vera.
City clerk?
Yes.
May I also include in the record that aside from the enhancements, including Jubalo and the, the earmarking of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for a budget analysis, I'm in favor of the rest of the budget.
And I echo that comment as well.
I'm sorry?
I echo that comment as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, now, we would take the resolution adopting the budget for the successor agency for Culver City redevelopment. And this basically is just funding the, the debt service.
Are we doing each one of them separately? Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember McMoran, a second from Councilmember Fish, to adopt the resolution for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year budget for the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Please vote. All members have voted, and that motion passes unanimously. Next will be the, the budget for the housing authority. And as I mentioned, the housing authority does include funds for the Jubalo Village project.
This is, this is one-hundred percent Jubalo, right? Because we're depleting it?
Yeah, there's a, about five-hundred thousand dollars that was, that can go to the last of the rental assistance payments for this year, and then most everything else has been moved into the general fund.
I have a motion by Councilmember McMoran. I have a motion by McMoran, second by Councilmember Fish, to adopt a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget for the Culver City Housing Authority, including, including funds for Jubalo Project. Please vote. Thank you. That motion passes, three ayes, two noes. Noes by Mayor O'Brien and Councilmember Vera.
And City clerk, can we get the same note on this one? I'm in favor of the rental assistance.
And finally, we'll entertain a motion for the Culver City Parking Authority.
And the Parking Authority budget includes the operation and capital projects related to the structures in addition to all of the city's parking meters on the streets. So, that is eight-point-three-million-dollar appropriations for the upcoming fiscal year.
We have a motion by Councilmember McMoran, a second by Mayor O'Brien. Please vote. All members have voted, and that motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Moving on. We have a formal resolution of the City Council adopting the classification and salary plan for the city employees effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. So, this includes the salary schedules for all the miscellaneous groups and the safety units, police and fire. This, the MOU, the existing MOU for the miscellaneous units includes a four percent increase pursuant to the Salary Initiative Ordinance approved by voters in nineteen-fifty-three and then amended in nineteen-eighty-two. There's a one-point-five percent salary adjustment for both police and fire based on the MOUs from the city of Los Angeles.
We have a motion by Councilmember McMoran, a second by Vice Mayor Puzza, to adopt the resolution approving salary schedules for miscellaneous employees, police safety employees and fire safety employees effective July first, twenty-twenty-five. Please vote. All members have voted. That motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Now, in order to fund the Jubalo Village project, the City Council needs to take an action to decrease the contingency reserve below the established target for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Funds were, the manner in which funds were put into that reserve was through City Council resolution, and so to decrease the fund, the City Council needs to do that in the same manner, which is this resolution before you.
We have a motion by Councilmember McMoran, second by Councilmember Fish, to adopt the resolution approving use of the city's contingency reserve funds.
The final resolution, oh, sorry.
Still voting.
Got ahead of myself.
All members have voted. The motion passes, three ayes, two noes. Noes from Mayor O'Brien and Councilmember Vera.
Now, the final resolution is to amend City Council Policy Statement 5002, which are the financial policies, to establish a committed reserve for loan to Community Corp of Santa Monica toward construction of affordable housing units in the Jubalo Village project located at four-four-six-four Sepulveda Boulevard, Culver City.
I have a motion by Councilmember McMoran, a second by Councilmember Fish, to adopt a resolution amending City Council Policy 5002, financial policies, to establish a committed reserve for Jubalo Village in the amount of twelve million dollars. Please vote. All members have voted. The motion passes, three ayes, two noes. Noes from Mayor O'Brien and Councilmember Vera.
Mayor, if I may ask a quick question of staff, there, I, I received an email from, and I believe it was sent to the whole council and, and city staff, about item number seven in the resolution, twenty-two-five R, about the role, the items that roll over, and I believe it was sent to you, see if it was over to. Did we, did we just vote on, on that policy? I was trying to figure out which of the...
No.
Okay.
So, that, that lives in Policy 5001, which is the budgeting policies. And the, the resol, you voted on it in the resolution for the budget because we reiterate that in that resolution, that the city manager has the ability to carry over. So, some funds are encumbered and they carry over automatically. So, if we have a contract that we let in the current fiscal year for five-hundred thousand dollars, but we've only spent a hundred thousand dollars this year, the four-hundred thousand automatically carries forward because it's encumbered in that specific contract with that vendor. There are other things that get appropriated every year in the budget that staff just doesn't have time to get encumbered in contracts yet. It takes longer to do the RFP or, you know, staff has competing priorities and they don't get to it. The, the best example, and I think I used this in my budget workshop, of something that was set by council in twenty-three, twenty-four, council authorized the Fox Hills specific plan and the Hayden Tract specific plans for a total of one-point-three million dollars. The planning department was working on the general plan. They did have, they didn't have time to go out and, and do the RFP and select the firms for the specific plans in the prior fiscal year. That happened in the current fiscal year. So, that was an amount that was appropriated in the prior year, not encumbered, and the city manager carried those funds forward. And that's, again, the policy gives the city manager that authority. That typically happens once we close the fiscal year. And CIP projects are different from this, right? CIP projects, the amount, we anticipate that they take many more than a single year to complete. So, those funds carry forward automatically. When we close the budget, which happened, close the year, the fiscal year, in, usually it's October, November, because it takes that long for all the bills to hit, the revenue to post, the auditors to bless everything. At that point, we bring, we look, the departments tell us what things they didn't get to, a list goes to the city manager, and then he reviews those things and, and makes recommendations on what is approved to be carried over.
Thank you for that explanation. That's really helpful. The suggestion that was sent to me from Michelle Dennis, who's... The suggestion that was sent to me from Michelle Dennis, who's the public finance professional we, we heard from this evening from the city of Santa Monica, was to add, just with approval by city council to those rollovers. We obviously, you know, fully appreciate the expertise of our city manager. This is more a, a, you know, for us as financial, trying to make sure we have transparency and make sure that as we deal with our deficit, if there are things that are rolling over that the council could review, that maybe the council doesn't want to roll over or things, you know, aren't needed anymore, just to have that ability to look and see what is needed and what isn't. I'm wondering if that can be amended to bring that also to council for our approval? So, it's fully transparent for the public and for the council to review those items?
We would have to bring Council Policy 5001 back to the council to review and amend and that would have to come back as a separate item, you know, pending three nodding heads and then at that point, we could have a discussion about amending that policy.
Well, if it's okay, I'd, I'd like to ask if we could get three nodding heads just to have a discussion about adding council review to items that roll over from previous budgets?
So, I have Vice Mayor Puzza, Mayor O'Brien, Councilmember McMoran and Councilmember
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, CFO's over.
We're done with this one, right?
Yes.
We are on to A3.
Mayor A3 has 42 speakers.